Yeah, you want to do our call? Okay. Uh, William Clavinder?
Here.
Oh, get this?
Here.
Jimmy Dero, here. Valerie Tarby?
Here.
Rich Buss?
Here.
I need the fudge box.
To the flag, in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, before we get to the approval of the minutes, I thought it would be nice, uh, for us to take a moment of silence and remembering Ralph Leonard. And before we do that, I just wanna, um, let the public and the council know that Ralph served on the town council, um, for a number of terms, starting in ninety-six. He also served in, uh, two thousand and three, two thousand and five, two thousand and seven through eleven. He was president of the town council in two thousand and two thousand and one. Uh, he also served on our plan commission. I think some of you knew that. He's president of the plan commission from two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen. He served on the redevelopment commission in two thousand and twelve, served in the second century committee in the nineties. As many of you know, that has evolved into latest means reorganization. Um, and as you all are probably well aware, Ralph also served on Kiwanis and was one of the founding members of Kiwanis in the town Culver. Um, if anyone could be called a servant to his community, Ralph would be one of those people. And I know that everyone in this room has worked with Ralph, and we all grieve the loss of him. This community will never be the same without him. Uh, so I just wanna take a moment of silence to show the community our own grief and grieve with Barbara. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. Um, approval of minutes from the previous meeting?
We have approval of the July twenty-eighth executive session and regular meeting minutes, August fourth special meeting, August eleventh what session and regular meeting, and August thirteenth more session.
Still move, secretary?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, except I can read it.
All right, next we have the ordinance twenty twenty hyphen zero zero six, amending and restating golf cart ordinance. Uh, I know we were putting this on the agenda, and Wayne, I think, wanted some more time for this. Do you want to table that, Jonathan, for next time?
Yeah, Wayne asked that we hold off until the September twenty-second council meeting.
Okay.
He had a couple of questions for Jim and the prosecutor's office that he wants to get worked out.
Okay, is that approved, everybody? Council, we go ahead and move that out of it?
Uh, yeah.
All right, next we have ordinance twenty twenty zero zero seven, amending and restating traffic regulations involving Chadwick Shores access road speed limit. Uh, Jonathan, do you wanna read that?
Sure.
I think we all know what it is, but...
Uh, it's two items. Basically, the, uh, number one is the unnamed access road immediately north and east of one thousand four West Shore Drive, also known as Chadwick Shores condominiums, shall have a speed limit of ten miles per hour effective upon passage of this ordinance. A map of the section affected is included as Exhibit A. And item two is any person violating this ordinance shall, upon conviction thereof, pay a penalty of any sum not less than five dollars nor more than twenty-five for each and every offense as established in prior town code section, uh, four point one point two. So it's reducing the speed limit, um, around Chadwick Shores to ten miles per hour, as discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, any questions or comments? A motion to pass the ordinance on first read?
Still move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, does this involve the name of him and his street? I think we should be set at thirty at the next meeting, if that's all right?
My comment, I would suggest that, um, this is an unnamed street, um, and that, you know, with the city, but we should probably assign something to this. I think for EMS response and for other reasons, consider, uh, consider that the short extension of this.
Yeah, Rich and I talked about this. The only concern is just, uh, I think there's a dozen or so homeowners on that stretch that will have to change their address, but we've talked about some ideas. So I think if we send a letter out, if anyone has any suggestions, my thought was to send a letter out to those residents with a couple of ideas, allow for some feedback, put it on the agenda down the road. Once we're done with you. Probably in the next week or two, try and get that letter out. If anybody has any thoughts or suggestions, it may be something put out online too, to see if there's any.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
So they find a shortness on all of their...
Yeah, expecting to keep trying to keep that short.
Maybe a portable hardware or something like that.
Okay. All right, next we have the large employer utility relief. Jonathan sent out a proposal, um, and I thought, do you wanna go ahead and go over the highlights of that, Jonathan?
Yes.
For the public's sake?
So, um, if approved tonight, uh, I believe I had it starting, yeah, tomorrow, so we put this out tomorrow, and take applications through September seventeenth, and hope to make recommendations at the September twenty-second council meeting. Um, again, that's, I'm flexible on that. If we think we need longer or a little more time for applications to come in, but, uh, discussed at the last meeting, so it would be primarily, um, designed to benefit, uh, employers with fifty or more employees as they were kind of ruled out the first time we did this program. Um, and it would use a similar score sheet to what we used, uh, for the small business version of this. Um, so, uh, like Karen and I, maybe we have Bob too. Uh, once they come in, we would score them, uh, take a look at what expenses they actually had for March, April, and May, take a look at how they were affected by COVID, if they either had a loss of revenue, uh, or increased expenses or some combination during that period. And then I'm suggesting a maximum award of four thousand five hundred, or the total of those three bills, whichever is less. When we did a small business version, the total, um, maximum award was one thousand five hundred. I think that's the high points. There's any questions?
Do you think projected financial impact of how many businesses or government agencies involved with forty-five hundred dollars each?
Um, yeah, at the spreadsheet, I think we had, uh, when we looked at it as a group, there were only a half a dozen on there. I don't know if Karen, if we identified any others besides those. I think library was maybe the only other one that came up in discussion at our last meeting. I wouldn't anticipate it being more than ten that I can think of.
So, ten times forty-five hundred, probably should be here, okay?
Likely six or seven.
Right.
Any thoughts or comments to Jonathan's proposal?
Things could be made between our rental fees and, um, the businesses themselves.
Um, yeah, based on the discussion at, uh, the last council meeting, um, I did not score those differently, so it's basically worded as, uh, they can either have fifty or more employees or be a government agency, either one, they're looking both the same.
Any other questions, council? Um, my only comment was maybe give longer time on the application, like we could do it at the first October meeting instead of the seventh, September.
Yeah.
That works, you know, give more than five days.
Oh, I, I, you mean extend the application deadline too, so you look at it at the first meeting in October?
Yeah, yeah, maybe just give a little more time.
I'd be fine with that.
Any motions to approve, Jonathan moving forward on this?
Still move?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those? Um, thank you for your work on that, by the way. Put that together, hopefully. Um, okay, next we have economic development facilitator. Uh, we taught, as you guys know, we're talking about having an economic development summit with all of the key organizations, still trying to figure out how to roll that out with, uh, meetings, whether they're in person or, um, separate Zoom calls leading up to a bigger, larger group meeting. Uh, in the meantime, I had, uh, talked with, um, a potential candidate for facilitating that type of, um, plan that involves more than just, uh, meetings, but, um, educating each of these organizations on economic development, taking a look at where we're at today, where we wanna go, um, kind of starting to formulate a vision and a plan, uh, for us and what will each of those organizations play. Um, so I, I met with, uh, scout Cheryl, and then I asked Jonathan to join a meeting, um, have him also look over, uh, her proposal to the town and ask questions and, you know, give his input on his perception of this as well. So we did receive a proposal from her. Uh, I've passed that on to Jonathan to present to all of you. I don't know if you're ready to make a decision on that tonight, um, but I thought we can have Jonathan kind of go through the highlights of that proposal, get your input, see if you're ready to make a decision or not, go from there.
I didn't put that one off. Do you have it?
Uh, well, I do have it on this computer, though.
Why don't you just put it in our box and give it to us?
Yeah.
Can we review it and then we get, talk about it next time?
Yeah, we'll forward you the electronic version of it.
That's good.
And try to get your eyes on it and send Jonathan or me any questions that we could get to Cheryl before the next meeting, and that way we've got answers for you before you, you know, we make a decision as a council. She originally developed this proposal, taking us from this stage of the workshop all the way to, uh, a plan, a written plan. Um, and I asked her to kind of itemize that and break it out because, you know, I wasn't sure how far we wanted to go as a council and, um, kinda wanted to also see how the meetings went, how we bring together the organizations, and where that heads. So, uh, I'll send you the current proposal of what she suggested for facilitating all of this, but also the original that kind of describes what we, what path we could take if we go beyond this.
Besides the proposal, or that original outline include specifically the groups involved that are being invited to our space?
Yeah, we've pretty much said it all. Like, we wanna have Chandler, Development Culver, Visitor Center, Redevelopment Plan Commission, Council, and MCEC, literally anyone who touches economic development, so. Um, she's, she, she's an expert on economic development. She's worked with lots of world communities. I think I sent you guys her bio, but, uh, I, I found her to be a fantastic potential resource. Um, I really enjoy talking to her. She's, you can tell she's worked with a lot of communities just like ours. So, we, we will get that to you and maybe look at making a decision at the next meeting if you guys are ready. Uh, okay, next is twenty twenty-one budget?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where to go with this. Uh, I'm just anticipating that we would kind of know where we're at, um, but I will, uh, change course midstream, and basically I provided everyone a copy of the proposed budget, and that was with the original budget that Jeff had proposed for EMS, and understanding that that may change a little bit. Um, but just so you all know, right now we're looking at the first budget at four seventy, six twenty-five, and that we've got some changes. It was some changes that Jonathan and I discussed that we didn't have, uh, since we've been a little bit. Um, places at five sixty-eight, six twenty-five, fires at two hundred twenty-two, seven forty-three. Um, EMS is to be determined. Um, street is at three seventy-one, two seventy-five, park, two sixty-three, eight fifty, MTH, one eighteen, six fifty, Culver Road and Street, thirteen hundred. Ritter boats is at nine thousand three hundred and four. Uh, I need to put a number in for grants, but that's what those money comes in, money goes out sort of thing, is kind of what you get with Jonathan. I just had that change. Um, but, uh, right now, where I'd like to give the notice that I will, as soon after September first as possible, we have the public hearing scheduled for September twenty-second and the final passage at the, I think it's October thirteenth meeting. Um, if you all are comfortable or creating me advertising the budget with any changes that we decide on Thursday, it's not anything that can't be adjusted going forward. I just want your blessing to go ahead and move forward, knowing that there will be changes.
For the record, our work session this afternoon has been continued since twenty-seven to the top.
Thank you.
All right, so I think Karen's asking for a motion to approve the budget as it stands today, knowing full well that, uh, at Thursday's work session, we may be changing the EMS budget, um, but it certainly wouldn't be changing it to be a higher number.
It's right.
It's going higher.
Uh, but if it is just the motion to go ahead and advertise with the members that are decided on the next meeting.
Okay.
I move.
All right. Phil Clavinder moves that we approve the budget as it stands today, um, authorizing Karen to make changes based on Thursday's meeting as their second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Jeff, I just wanted to thank you for, uh, putting in a lot of time and effort on your budget. I know we'll get there. I appreciate all the conversations I'm getting had to have with Karen and Jonathan and some of the council members and, um, and why you feel confident we'll get there with you.
I think we will, I think we will.
I, I have a very strong "together we will" feeling that comes from you, and I appreciate that. Um, and your flexibility, being so new to this with us. So thank you for that. Regional stellar plan update? I think, I think the only one might be related to the message boards at this point.
The only thing I had is that the commissioners opened the bids for the electronic message board signs, which we'll have one of, and then, uh, the grant administrator, Shannon, is reviewing those, and they expect to make an award at the next commissioner's meeting.
Yeah, so the, the good news on that is the bids came in under the grant amount, um, so that's a good sign because we had wanted to use the local match dollars on that commercial county tourism for the installation of those signs, because you wanna use local dollars when you're gonna move dirt, so that you don't have to do environmental releases. So we were hoping those bids would come in under the grant amount, and they did, so. Yay. One, one small EPIA. Uh, stellar plan update for the town Culver?
I had one thing. Um, we have a proposed amendment to the contract with Frasier, and this was for the design fees at Cavalier Park. So when we originally signed the contract, uh, we had hoped to be able to include some new playground equipment at Culver Park in addition to the project at Cavalier. Um, however, between, um, costs at the Beach Lodge and costs there, we decided to eliminate, um, the playground equipment at Culver Park, and as such, they did have a, a little bit less scope of work and offered to reduce their fees for us. Um, so I have a proposed contract amendment to reduce, uh, the contract fees with Frasier by four thousand two hundred dollars, and I'd ask for a motion to approve that and, and to authorize the council vice president to sign that one.
Still move? Second.
I will use myself for voting, but I'll call for your vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have for stuff.
All right, thank you, Jonathan. Um, it's kind of nice to see the Cavalier Park getting used already, see people walking around with track and playing on the playground equipment. Uh, town managers report?
Um, a couple of utilities things. Uh, I have, Bob has a quote for us from Frickin' Materials for salt. Uh, the Frickin' Materials was actually a little bit higher, but we've used them the last few years, and they've been more reliable, I guess, on delivery during high snow years, and also, uh, we've been more satisfied with that particular material. So, um, Bob's recommendation and mine would be to approve the quote from Frickin' Materials for bulk salt at one hundred and two dollars and fifty cents per ton delivered.
Still move? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it was a nickel difference on the two.
How much salt will we buy?
A lot. I couldn't tell you for last year, it wasn't a lot compared to some of the previous, but off the head.
I think we had surplus last year, or, or the year before, we didn't get as much, uh, so we had to buy as much.
Um, and just, last meeting, there was a discussion on meters and radio units. Uh, so Bob has ordered fifty of those as council had authorized. Uh, it was from EJP, and the total is twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents, and, uh, we, we already received a check from, um, the developer for, I believe, the first twenty-one units, I'm sorry, thirty-two units, so. Uh, that's just one of those in and outs. Uh, we've ordered it, we haven't received it. I don't think the invoice was on for tonight yet. We received some of the payment and, uh, the developer essentially paid for that, so. Uh, Bob also has a quote from Thomas Excavating, and this is to remove a broken fire hydrant at the intersection of Climax and West Jefferson. Uh, this particular one is also a conflict with our West Jefferson Gateway Project that'll happen next year, and there's another hydrant nearby there on Climax, so we don't need to do a replacement. So I asked for a motion to approve a quote from Thomas Excavating for seven thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars.
Still move? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one EMS item, uh, just ask for a motion to return Scott Erickson and Stephen Kovitz's pay back to seventeen dollars per hour affected the August seventeenth pay period. Both were increased, uh, and took on some extra duties when we didn't have it directed.
Motion to approve?
Still move? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a park item. Um, Amber's enrolled in a, in part-time online graduate school at Indiana University, uh, working on a master's degree in recreation administration. Um, her total, uh, course fees for this semester are three thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, and it's been a while since we've done one, but in the past, the town had been willing to support, um, some of those educational costs, uh, as part of a continuing education agreement, and so we still have that as an option. And basically, that just requires the employee to pay back a portion of the class fees if they leave employment within the, within twelve months of completing the class, and, um, the agreement would allow us to reimburse after the class is completed. And again, it's been a while since we've actually done one of these, so I didn't know where we wanna cap it. I guess my first thought was maybe around fifteen hundred. Um, that seemed like a number that if other employees wanted to do it, we could also support.
Did we, I think we did, uh, is it paramedic?
We did paramedic.
Yeah, we did it for two people, right?
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
Was it two? I was thinking that was like six. I'm not sure if I'm saying that wrong.
And the thirteen hundred is for this coming semester or the whole year?
The semester that just started, just the fall semester.
And then it's a master's program, how many, how many semesters are anticipated?
Four, four.
Four.
And I think with paramedic, they were supposed to have a contract or something that never happened.
Yes.
Yeah, um, and that was an eighteen-month program, I think, right?
It's on, it was on my, yeah, the last, so we did. But previous, prior to that.
Prior to that.
How does an S R D, is there a formal program in any way that, um?
No, it just, for our handbook, it just says, um, that if it's approved by the supervisor in the council, and it's towards, you know, an educational program that would benefit them in their position, if I approve it and you approve it, there's not a setback. Um, and there's in that separate agreement that we had done in the past, but, but again, it didn't set an amount, it just says that it'll be paid back if they leave at full.
And on a program like this, we would, uh, re, retaining degrees or medical certification, is that completion required or...
Yeah, so, um, I think what we would do is reimburse after we've received notice that the class has been completed in class, basically.
Okay, I have a question, uh, looking at your thing, Jonathan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then, um, if the employee agrees to pay back a portion on the class fees?
Yeah.
What do we determine as a portion?
Uh, in the agreement, it says one twelfth for every month.
Okay, all right, this, just a question.
So if they leave after one month, they pay eleven-twelfth, so if they leave after eleven months, they just pay full.
Just a general question.
Yeah.
So, I do have a question about the paramedic. Do we, was that two thousand for the full paramedic course? Was it a percentage of it, do we know?
Pretty much.
No, it was pretty full, close to the full, man.
That's what I thought, too.
But it was right there, so.
Okay, so we basically pay for them to get their paramedic and return they were to stay for a year afterwards, right?
I don't think it was a decision to that at that time.
Yeah, and I don't know if it was before we did that.
Okay.
The payment thing, and that was kind of a cause and effect sort of thing, yeah.
So that one may have just been for the town manager when Dave shut and take that out.
Yeah.
But I, I would be, um, paying up to two thousand.
Yeah, and are we doing two thousand a semester or are we thinking, uh, per year? What are the thoughts on that? Obviously, this is a master's degree, it's going to be more expensive than a paramedic degree, right? Or paramedic certification?
Jonathan, you're basically a fifty percent rate of reimbursement?
Fifty percent for, for semester.
Per semester?
You don't have prices for a paramedic, then?
It's more than two thousand.
I'm sure, well, fifty-five hundred.
Wow. Wow.
I got one, so.
Well, can I make a suggestion that, since you're policy had it too good, but personally, you know, so that we got it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quite consistency in terms of, uh...
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. So let's first, um, authorize Jonathan to write this as a policy, and I read, it sounds to me like there's some consensus on fifty percent of cost, whether it's a certification course or a classroom course or toward a degree, that we would look at fifty percent, but it has, I, I do think it has to be approved by council. You could ask someone going for their NDA at thirty thousand dollars a year, who might not wanna You could ask someone going for their N D A at thirty thousand dollars a year, who might not want to go that high.
I would say. Really, they could roll that into a C H P, I mean, I think you should be like a capital or employee, not one senior.
Sorry, what were you gonna say?
Yeah, I say a cap for the year or something.
So, we did about fifty percent, but cap it per year. Calendar year, I assume, or school year, like, how does that work?
Who's calendar?
Calendar, that would make it more clean for Karen, who I would assume. So what about two thousand per calendar year is the cap, but the cost, the amount would be about fifty percent of the cost up to two thousand, because it sounds like we've done two thousand in the past for paramedic certification. Would you, you know what I mean, it, it cost fifty-five thousand, but we capped it at two or whatever.
I would take your point.
Yeah, okay, could you get that, Jonathan, for policy sake?
Yes.
Now, in the meantime, um, then, would you honor a motion to approve paying fifty percent of Amber's cost for this calendar year up to two thousand dollars?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Why? Alright, looks like we just did a policy and no time. Okay, back to town manager report.
Um, I met with Patty Stongs about the antiquarian historical society possibly renting a portion of the upstairs with Beach Lodge and provide, essentially providing improvements to the upstairs. So the section that hasn't been redone, that used to be living area, um, in lieu of any rent for a few years. So they, uh, are kind of pursuing this, I hopefully will have a follow-up next meeting. Maybe have, uh, someone from AHS here as well, but they're getting quotes to redo the flooring, um, repair some drywall and, um, finish up electric work up there. Uh, this is something, we had talked a little bit at council, probably six, no, eight, ten months ago, our last fall. Um, is something to at least consider, so I guess before I spend any more time on it, just wanted to let everybody know. Um, should follow up, they're still interested, make sure there's still interest on our end or see if there's any other concerns. Like I said, my thought would be that, and I think what we talked about last year was that they would provide those improvements in exchange for, um, a lease, basically at no cost, for a few years.
And it's just for office space or repository for historical archives?
The idea originally, I think, was just, um, for those of you that have been up there, recall the, the one kind of middle bedroom. Um, the last, then, when I just discussed with there a couple weeks ago, was maybe some shared space, kind of that living room, kitchen room area, that's all kind of one big open area. But it would be specific to a certain area, it would be intended for really office space. And then another thing we had talked about, I think previously in the fall, was that they might have some exclusive space. And then also, there may be some space that we would, um, kind of make open to any nonprofit organization in Culver for a certain number of hours a week if they needed to meet up there. Um, but no, the intent would not be for storage, it'd be for, uh, office space and eating space, basically.
It's great, I mean, they.
Other than maybe a filing cabinet, something like that.
I mean, they have a lot of, I think, really interesting stuff, but it's, there's a lot of, I just can't figure it out.
It wouldn't, yeah.
I just.
There's not a government.
That has, I mean, certainly it's office space and things like that, but, um, the repository, on the environmental system. It's added for proper environmental storage for our, our archival material, for storage. The other thing.
Okay, I guess my question would be, so they're thinking they would renovate part of the upstairs in exchange for a good lease rate or, you know, basically nothing. Um, but then who does the design work on that, like?
Yeah, I, so that would be, I guess, I, I'd like to put together a draft, um, lease agreement that would, that would, that would, my thought would be that, yeah, any improvement would either come to Amber right first or the whole castle, whatever your preference is, yeah.
Yeah.
And, I mean, they're essentially talking repair and, um, probably like a office tile, style carpet and, um, repainting the walls, kind of neutral office color, repairing, patching holes. Again, I'm open for discussion or any feedback on it.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I wanna go up there and see it, because I haven't honestly seen the space and think through how we work out the design in that space and think through who else might be in that space or how it might be used or before making a decision, like, really, talk about that, I guess, more. I think it's a, a good idea, uh, but I mean, I.
As a reminder, the council, the visitor center has an office space up there since, I think, two thousand seventeen. Um, and did some, I mean, very much, I think it was painting and painting up the floor.
Do they actually lease or, I can't remember what we worked out.
You know, now that this came up, I believe we did sign a lease for that first year, but we probably haven't updated it since. And I don't think, I think if there was any charge.
No, it wasn't charged, it was an evergreen, so we, we, we saw it, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either, but I, I, we put something together a couple of years ago when I first moved in and, uh, with council group, but I, it's, yeah, it, it's not evergreen, it's expired, so, no, we haven't looked at it.
Well, I know, but, uh, with the O C dollars being involved, and that those O C dollars only touch the elevator really on that floor, but there's certain types of people they won't technically allow in that space.
Yeah, and I, I mean, that definitely affected what we could do up there with their money.
Yeah.
We didn't put any office space in the building, or we're allowed to do a small.
Which is probably the smart thing, really, because we, we have tax dollars in visitor center and some other organizations too, that could be a little tricky there, but.
Um, do you wanna have council members take a look at it, on the agenda first?
Yeah, let's, yeah, and let's think that, where I even sort of wanna know. I guess some. I wanna hear from the public too, like, some, I don't know if we need to do direct engagement, but, I mean, that's, that's space that can be used by the whole community, I just. Anyway. Back to you.
Um, uh, we have a special event, a special event permit request and, uh, from the chamber, and it's just for the scarecrow contest, uh, that normally is part of Fall Fest to run September thirtieth through November first. Um, and they separated this out just in case, I think, A, to give them a little more time to think about what a normal Fall Fest could look like, and just to make sure there wasn't any concern over what's being able to do this.
So this is so that they can put scarecrows on light bulbs and stuff like that?
Yep, just the scarecrow contest.
Okay. Motion to approve the scarecrow contest?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Why? Any opposed?
And then the last item I have is just a suggestion that we move our, uh, September meetings in Tri-Act Beach Lodge. We have the audio video system there that's complete and up and running, and I think it, you know, it's a little bigger and, um, maybe a little bit better audio over there, so I'd like to at least give it a try and see how it goes in September. We have public hearings for plan commission and redevelopment, or not redevelopment, uh, plan commission and B Z A. They'll have to go out this week, so my thought was just go out and move those in September and see how it goes. Everybody's okay with that.
I think that's great, I can go ahead.
Okay.
There's, I think, some audio speakers, and I just, even for the people who want to dial in.
Yep.
They could probably hear better with a toron speaker and, yeah.
Okay.
And you could do some beach lodge, right?
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you Jonathan. Uh, department head reports. Um, Jeff, who's been fully invested in, um, budget work, any other things to report from the EMS, Jeff?
Um, I spoke to Jonathan the other day, and he wanted to bring it up in the meeting here. He, the council would continue to allow me to hire E M Ts and paramedics for a part-time roster as I see fit. Uh, we have a couple of E M Ts that have interest, um, which, which is good, which is helpful for us, um, in many different factors. But, uh, I would like your approval to, uh, continue that as, as needed to, like, formulate an actual number that's, uh, that's workable, we can stay with.
Yeah, it seems like we, we should leverage any interest really given us with how difficult it sometimes is to get an E M T. At least that's my opinion.
Yeah, I think a motion to approve hiring, uh, part-time E M Ts and paramedics is needed.
With the.
With the salary ordinance.
That's second.
Okay, bill of 110 removed, salad seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Why?
Up on the mats, um, I'm really, uh, been meeting with a lot of people throughout the community. I'm trying to find out as much as I can and then get the interest out there and get the, uh, department known within the, uh, organization and the county here and the local level, including myself, so, uh, everything's progressing very well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, starting to report from the fire department, anyone online to report on fire? I don't see the earth then, unless they're trying to unmute.
Anybody know when the new fire engine coming?
Have not got an update, um, we were expecting it, yeah, right around the end of the month.
Right around the, the end of this month, yeah.
I know they did the final inspection and I, I think it was still expected to be on time, then I don't think they had anything major.
Okay, I think it still has to be backed to some rules, I think.
Yeah, but I think that was still on that timeline of, you know, the end of the month, maybe first week in September. That was the last I heard, yeah.
Okay, it looked like Wayne was on the call, Wayne, uh, anything to report, Wayne?
I don't think he's on.
One class name was there, there he is.
He's just an invite, he's not.
Oh, he's on the invite list, okay, alright, sorry about that. Um, anything new for the park department, you know, park?
Uh, sorry, I just, I'm very good, um, nothing new for the park department, I just, I wanted to thank you all, um, for approving that. Um, I started class in yesterday, it's going really well so far, but I know we did mention that. I'll be getting my master's in science and recreation administration, um, which is very directed towards the work I'm doing. Um, so I just wanted to express my gratitude, especially now, while always progressing, um, and continue to educate professional development. So I really appreciate it, thank you.
It's for all your hard work and hard work.
That's all, thank you.
Uh, probably the next thing, not the new, I mean, the lease, uh, you probably lost some part of the law. Uh, anyone from the plan commission reporting? I've seen one up there for plan commission or B Z A. So let's move to C R C, and if there is a plan commission, uh, or B Z A member reporting, just shout. We'll move on to anything to report from the C R C, Bush.
Um, first, our next meeting is the twenty-first of September. Um, then our last meeting, um, the members of commission expressed concern about not getting materials in a timely fashion and or getting studied and prepared for the meeting. So we established the protocol that basically the agenda is finalized typically the Friday or Thursday or Friday before the meeting. If I do not have materials with the president, which the judge of the agenda does not have materials, add an item to the agenda, um, then it will not be considered for vote at that following meeting. That doesn't, that doesn't restrict ideas and suggestions coming up at the meeting itself, but in most cases, in most unusual situations, we will not make, you make a decision about something that is raised at the meeting in the following meeting. So the commission members have a chance to study the issue and understand that the recommendation was to do. That's it?
Okay.
The one other thing that came up was the use of OneDrive, so I think we're gonna try that, um, kind of in that same vein, I would bring it up in case it's something we might try to catch the two, but, um, one of the members was concerned about just trying to keep track of emails and every attachment and all that kind of stuff, so we're gonna try for the redevelopment commission. Uh, using OneDrive, which we've been told is pretty much like Dropbox and already on our, uh, Microsoft license, so. Um, for redevelopment, we're gonna upload everything kind of into a monthly folder, so maybe we'll work back on that if council wants to move that direction for meetings.
I mean, Jonathan already said, obviously, if you obviously need email, um, there, uh, the agenda is there, any of the attachments are there, um, the claims are there for any tree, all of that one folder, which is obviously, depending on the, depending on your schedule or agenda schedule. So, um, it'd be easier to find both for the commission members. Um, we also swing in and access.
It'd just be staff in the commission, I'll get that.
Makes sense, okay. Alright, thank you, Bush. Anyone from the tree commission reporting? Alright. I've seen one online, Clark's report, I just have several claims that were put in, had to prove, uh, being put last week to the public boys and girls club, you get a check for two thousand five hundred. E J Kestat for three thousand eight twenty-five for materials and supplies for the sewer departments. Um, also, E J Kestat, seven thousand four hundred and fifty, and then another invoice for seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty, and there were also materials and supplies. Uh, state work accounts, five thousand two hundred and thirty out of water and five thousand two hundred and thirty out of sewer for, um, their annual audits. Uh, Zane Excavating for eighteen thousand, and that's for storm rain incidents. Uh, priority project resources, twenty thousand dollars that came as a subsidy for the stellar. Um, work in the mission of contracting, eighty thousand, that's seven dollars, twenty percent, and that was for beach lodge. Okay, um, before we make a motion, I just wanna make sure Bill Giffens and I recuse ourselves from the Boys and Girls Club contribution and from the decision for the budget for next year, so as we vote to approve claims, please don't count Bill and I in that one. Uh, so motion to approve Karen's claims over fifteen hundred?
So.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, Karen. Attorney's report, hi Jen.
Hi, I have a, I have one thing that I wanted to report to you all, and this, uh, the day before our August eleventh hearing on, uh, seven oh nine, this public property, I got a contact from a colleague, Captain Russell, uh, that they were looking for more time to get a contract for any of the big repairs or decided that it just needed to model some property and go forward that way. Um, we did have the hearings, um, the judge sort of went along with that, but we had already kind of gone along with that as well. Um, rescheduled for October fourteenth at eleven o'clock, but the judge made it clear to the landowners and to the town, didn't think that they were doing anything, or whatever, he would consider a motion from town to be authorized to model some property and, uh, they would be charged for the justice. So, I think that was clear to them, and I think we expect some activity of some sort of the other before that. So, that's all.
Alright, thank you, Jen. I'm assuming there's no one here for utilities, shop, or ordinance violation? So we'll move to citizen input, start with, is there any citizen input on the phone? Unmute yourself now if you have citizen input. Alright, I think we gave them one enough, right? Any citizen input in the council room?
Yeah, Jen, I have a concern and a comment, um, I've carried a chest of bean with me five twenty seven. Uh, yesterday, N I S T O was working in the area, as they have been for the last week, relocating, uh, gas lines, installing new, new gas lines. Um, at about two o'clock, I got a knock at the door saying there was a breach in the gas line and, um, they wanted me to know that I might need to evacuate. So, um, I said, well, what's the plan? And they said, the plan was to find the shut-off valve and attempt to turn it off. And I said, how long do you think this might take? And they said, maybe an hour or two. Uh, about twenty minutes later, I think the fire department was called, EMS were called, and the police came out. And so I walked outside, and I could hear the gas rupture, which was on Davis Street, um, two houses away. And, uh, so there were some people mingling, and I said, what do you think? And the officer said, probably should leave, alright, so I evacuated. Um, my understanding was that breach occurred for about an hour, the gas was roaring out of, I mean, I could hear it and I could smell it out of that car. My concern is that they attempted this, um, tap of the line for new gas lines without exposing. My concern is that they attempted this, um, tap of the line for new gas lines without exposing a shut-off. They didn't have somebody ready to turn the line off if something happened, resulting in a, you know, breach of the line and cost incurred to have fire, rescue and things like that. So my observation is, is that, you know, is, is there not a policy that maybe the town is aware of that when NITSA does work on a line, they should at least have a plan ready to go to, to turn off gas? And NITSA have been a serious control team.
Given they just, uh, not dig until they've marked the lines and all of that, that's really frustrating. I honestly don't have the answer to that, but I do think we probably need to get one.
Yeah, I mean, we don't really have a pol- policy that goes into detail on, you know, their means and methods. So, you know, and that's probably...
Are they under any kind of state statute though, or? Or can, can we create, can we create a policy, Jen, that where we say you don't get to come in and work on these lines without exposing the shut-off first?
I don't know that we would have any authority over NITSA on that, I think, or matter of that. That might be another, uh, state, I mean, state agency probably. But, you know, my thought is, we talked about this on the hall, I'm surprised that policy, some of it didn't already exist. I wonder if they didn't...
Follow their own policy?
Yeah.
I think the first thing to do was try to get a public relations guy and say, hey, look what happened here. Let's make sure that doesn't happen in the future.
How do we keep our residents safe when you're not following any kind of, if there is a policy, it wasn't clearly followed. If there's not, how do we know you're not going to do this again and put someone at risk?
It could very well be that food is screwed up, you know, that's, but they, but that's, but that's what needs to know that. They need to tell them that you're not happy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, because our, our emergency services responder, police and fire, EMS, I mean, I don't think, um, we're out of the call and say, given the interest of safety, we are, our emergency responder, who's were out there, what, you know...
What happened?
Don't you have a constantly control as to what's, uh, please look at this.
I would recommend that's a term for it. I recommend you put that in writing, it just called.
Yeah.
Put it in writing, yeah.
Agreed.
And they're not done, they got a lot of money.
Alright. I don't, I don't even think we need to operate you to do that, just seriously. And if we need to pull Jim in to, you know, if you need any help with that, let us know. So if they, if they also aren't responsive, we'd like some responsive writing on how they're going to prevent this from happening again.
Well, make sure you get some response, you can always send them certified and that way you know they got it. Uh, just being thrown in a stack of incoming mail.
Yeah, let the...
And I would recommend something like that.
Yeah, maybe start with the call then. We're going to document it and write you, but we're also, we're calling this in because they're still out there and there's a sense of urgency on our part. Yeah.
They'll respond, I'm sure of that.
Okay.
And, and to, to make it all more serious, the, the representative who knocked on the door and said, and told me that there was a breach, said I didn't want to ring a doorbell because that could cause an explosion, so...
Oh, my God.
That's, you know, that's where we started. Don't like to expose, right?
Wow.
Don't turn anything on.
Did they, did they contact other farmers too, like?
They went to the door as far as I know, but the word enough is probably, you know, there's a lot of people that season on the high ground.
Sure.
They're reviewing for report and, and the south, uh, the west end or east end of Davis, so there's quite a few more houses to do.
Well, I also think it would be a courtesy to hit the town a heads up if you're going to be in town doing that level of work.
We knew they were coming, we didn't know the exact date, but they gave us about a two week window when they...
Okay.
Because that, they basically have to do it, um, because of the store market project order that starts here in a couple of weeks. They had to, you know, take some items in.
And they must have, like, fire leaves them.
Once it happened, yeah.
Wow. Alright, get on, on, any other citizen input here? Anything else? Alright, and go to council issues. Bill Giffens, any council issues?
None.
Bill Clementer, council issues? Rich West, council issues?
No, just thanking Karen and Jeff for all their work on the projects. punching numbers and, and doing all the hard work, I would very appreciate it.
Salad, council issues?
Yeah.
I have one council issue. I, I don't know about you guys, but I've had some people ask me about the, uh, various food trucks that appear showing up in town. Uh, I think one even went in the park. I don't know if all of these trucks have county permits, health department, whatever the forms that have to be filled out. Uh, I do know the one that was in the park, I don't think they had our permission to be in the park. Of course, it's the weekend, so it's not like we're policing this sort of thing. Uh, but it made me realize we don't have a comment ourselves that we require of these businesses that randomly set up shop in parking lots or, you know. And I just want to get a feel from you guys, have you heard anything at town hall? And what's the council think of, I understand why they're showing up, they can't, they don't have festivals right now and things have been canceled, and I'm sure these people are trying to make a living with the food trucks. Uh, I'm pretty sure there's probably, what, county level paperwork they have to work on?
So the last few years, how we've looked at it as, um, we had a lot of them during the, um, farmer's market during those hours in the same area as the other farmer's market vendors. Um, so that's Saturday in the morning until about one, I think, and then Tuesday night. Or if they're in a commercial parking lot and it's not a conflict with the existing parking there. Um, they've been allowed to do that, um, at least five years I've been here. But, right, we have had some come in and a citizen asks, um, I mean, I have to call myself to the health department just to make sure. Usually they do, sometimes they haven't, but it's not a difficult permit to get. Um, so if they're in a commercial parking lot or in the park, uh, during those farmer's market hours and have their county health department review, we've allowed them to do that for that. So they can't park on a public street in a normal parking spot and just run one, you know. Under those circumstances, we've allowed it over the last few years.
And so for the, uh, if they're in a park on a Sunday, they're not taught and who's supposed to be there?
We had one pop up in a residential area that, uh, our building fisher did go visit and they'll be on the agenda for, uh, the next BZA meeting for a special use variance to request that we allow it in that residential area.
There've been several of them that have been in the parking lot on ten and seventeen in front of Jameson for a company.
Yeah.
And I assume they're working that out with those business owners, that they allow them to...
I've not heard a complaint from any of the business owners that they're there, so I assume that's...
It just seems like there's so many more than in the past that I kind of, I guess I get it with COVID. I just wanted to make sure everything's only up and up and...
The only concern would be if we do see the parking issue, um, in those. So each of those commercial entities is supposed to have a certain number of parking spots and I guess probably more at the liquor store area there, but that's probably fewer spots for, um, business that's there. You know, if we do see a situation where the parking is a concern, we could probably enforce that a little more strictly, but if it's been in a commercial lot, we haven't seen a parking concern in the future at all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other council issues or anything else from Karen, Jonathan and Jim? Alright, motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye. We're anxious to move.